Sure, I'll call the meeting to order at 7:03. How's that? And so we start with the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we need to nominate and vote on a temporary chair for the meeting.
I'll nominate Lynn as our temporary chair for this meeting, and I will second that.
Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Abstain.
Thank you, Lynn, for being willing to do that.
Yes, thanks for volunteering, Lynn.
Yep. Okay. Okay, first up is approval of agenda, which you should have in front of you. Any changes or additions or subtractions?
One addition, if we can do bus lease, and we can do that anywhere. We want to do that maybe between five and six.
Sounds great. Bus bids? Is that what you said?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I forgot my hearing aid, so everybody's gonna have to speak up.
Bus lease bids.
I apologize for that, but that's what happens. Okay, so with that addition, is everyone okay with the agenda as it exists?
Yes.
Okay, good. Public input and announcements. Oh, Stan comes right in. Do you have something you want to say, Stan?
Oh, no, I can't. I can't get the volume on the...
Any public input or announcements? I'm guessing not. And so therefore, we don't need to have board discussion. And next is... Did someone...
Just Sarah getting her mic.
Okay. Again, folks, you're gonna have to help me out, because I'm not gonna hear things.
Yeah, no, I don't think there's...
We're okay?
No public input, right up there? Anybody? Anybody? Okay, nobody.
Okay. Next is approval of minutes from 6:1924. And I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from 6:1924. For purposes of discussion.
I'll second.
Thank you, Gray. Discussion.
I just have one clarifying point on the committee reports for the ad hoc committee. Near the bottom of that, there's a sentence that kind of, I think it's... It says, "Gray agrees there is no point in crafting a policy that teachers and administrators support and can enforce." I don't, I think that that's not what was meant, or...
I think there might have been a "don't" in there.
Right, there should be, right.
Does that, does that make sense to you, Gray? Since that was your quote?
And this is in reference to G11 that we were talking about before, or...
It's on the ad hoc committee. Report from last time and the minutes.
Okay, well, I mean, I certainly agree with that basic idea.
Right, he agrees that there is no point in crafting a policy that teachers and administrators can't support and can't enforce, or don't. Right, so that has to be inserted in there.
It said it can.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a red...
It's kind of a tricky sentence.
Red, white, by that.
My question, and maybe it's just me reading. In, under personnel. We, we made a motion. Carol made a motion to offer the existing administration a 4% raise. And I seconded that. And then there was discussion. And then down further, there's a roll call vote. On public speaking during this portion of the meeting. My, I guess my question is, were we legally okay doing that?
Doing a roll call?
Outside of the discussion, Gray?
Well, it was during discussion, right? I believe. That's what it looks like according to the minutes.
Right, and right, a member of the public wanted to...
Speak.
Speak. And I think we talked about the fact that the board chair would have the discretion to say yes or no. And Josh called and did a...
So we did a roll call. Okay. I'm just, I read that, and I was concerned about, are we doing, did we do what we should do?
Yeah.
I think in, in the past, we have done that a little less formally. We've done that by consensus. We haven't done a roll call.
Right.
But I think we, we looked at Robert's rules a little bit. You know, Josh had cited some pieces of it at the meeting. And yes, when somebody wants to join ongoing discussion, you have to, you have to sort through that. We, we subscribe to Robert's rules for small boards, so we do a couple of things a little less formally. Like discussion, you know, Robert's rules formally, you know, you... There are a lot more rules around even board members during discussion that we just don't even, we're far less formal.
Yeah. So we're, I'm, I'm just asking, I mean, I do not know...
I don't think there's anything problematic with doing that.
Okay.
I just think in the past, the board has kind of done that by consensus. They kind of go, "Is that okay? Is that okay? Okay."
Yeah.
So I think we've done that in the past a lot, but by consensus.
Yes, I would agree.
Yeah, yeah. And I think it is appropriate and okay to do that.
Okay. I mean, I'm okay with it, I just...
Yeah. Doesn't it hurt to check?
The question came into my head. And it's like, we have a, a motion and a second, and then we have a roll call vote. Which seemed weird to me.
I think the, I think the thing that is interesting about it is, you don't, you don't necessarily know somebody's gonna want to speak during discussion until the discussion's happening.
Yeah, right.
So you kind of have to look at it right then.
Yeah.
Yeah. It is kind of funky, yeah.
Yeah, it was just, to me, it felt a little strange. So I'm fine with that, I'm not gonna ask to change it at all. So other than the change for Gray's comment, all those in favor of approving the minutes? Thank you. Okay. Oh, shoot. And I'm sorry. We went into executive session, but it doesn't state what time we went into executive session.
But doesn't say when we went in? Uh, we can add that. It's easy enough to find.
Yeah, okay. I mean, it says when we came out.
Yeah.
But it didn't say when we went in.
Yeah, we can, we can find that and add that.
Yeah, I'm sure you can. Sorry, Rebecca, that's just me being me. Okay. So we approved the minutes, we're good there. Next is bus lease bids.
And Gray and Sarah, I'll send you an update in a second here, because we did just get our third quote.
We had ordered two Thomas buses sometime last, probably last winter, or maybe last fall, for that matter. So you might not remember that you did approve the purchase of two buses back then. And at the time, because of manufacturing, we weren't going to get these buses until the next year, which is where we are now. We actually received the two buses that we ordered, yes, from Thomases.
That way you get them all lined up out up there.
I'm not sure why she did that.
They, well, they are doing some electrical work on where we plug the block heaters in, so they needed space.
It just looks impressive.
Yeah.
The buses look like they're in great shape, too. So this week, I sent out requests for financing and to four financing companies. We've got, we got three quotes back. One from municipal leasing consultants, Daimler Truck Financial Services, and M&amp;T Bank. These are all three, three of these companies, we've done business with them in the past. And M&amp;T is, is our obviously chosen bank that we do all our business banking through. And in the past, they have not done municipal leasing, but they started to do that in the Brooklyn area. So they, they submitted a bid. And M&amp;T, out of the three, came in with the lowest, lowest quote, along with the lowest, obviously the lowest interest rate. We requested seven years financing, which is what we do on all our buses, with seven annual payments, with the first payment due at the signing of the lease. So their quote was for seven annual payments of $43,702.81, which is less than the other two. There's also a document fee for doing the lease, which isn't, which I did not include. M&amp;T's document fee was only $250 to process the lease, while municipal leasing, their fee was $850. Daimler Financial Services did not supply one, so I assume that was zero. But they were the highest bid, so I didn't contact them to see if there was one to begin with. So our recommendation would be to accept the bid from M&amp;T. And in the motion, to have the board, you know, accept the bid, and also to designate the superintendent or his designee to execute the lease documents.
I'll make that motion, what he said. I'll second it.
Discussion.
So this, then we own these buses?
After seven years, yeah. And it's, it's, I almost fell on the floor, you know, you know, this is, we haven't bought a bus in probably a new bus in three years. And these buses are $132,000 apiece. The last new one we got was like around $88,000, $89,000. Before that, they were always like in the low to mid 80s. And now they're, obviously have skyrocketed with...
And this is two buses, right? So 150...
This is two buses.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Abstain? There you go.
Thank you.
Let's get some new buses.
Go for a bus ride.
Data, versus data? Data update.
And I have some paper copies for folks if they would rather that. I'm gonna put it up on the screen. Five, if you don't mind passing those down that way. Two copies.
Thank you.
So this is the time of year where we check in on a couple of data points. We've been doing this for a long time. This is gonna be an interesting check-in, because there are some things we absolutely have, but there are some things we don't have. And if you remember, we've switched state tests the last few years, and that's gonna be the, the part we don't have. But the part I can talk a little bit about and give you some context and an idea of what this stuff means otherwise. So I want to remind you of some vocabulary that we've been using when we look at this data, these data. We talked a lot two years ago about making sense of data and trying to sort through what it can actually tell us about what's going on in the district. So we, we look at a lot of different things in any given day, or week, or month, or semester, or year. And some data that we look at, we're gonna call leading indicators. Leading indicators are our, our best points of data that really give us as close to real-time information as we can get. It's gonna be as closely related to what's going on in the classroom as, as, as we can share with you. So the best leading indicator is gonna be a formative assessment that a teacher gives in class and uses to inform what they do the next day. It's hard to get more relevant than, "We gave an assessment today, and I'm shifting what I'm doing in the classroom because of it." When we get further and further and further out, and we start looking at our state assessment data, we're gonna call that a lagging indicator. So that's further and further and further away of what's happening in the classroom and lags behind the work that we do. Leading indicators are right on that edge of what we're doing daily, and we can tell, "That thing I did today, did it work? Did it not work, or was it neutral?" Those lagging indicators are gonna take sometimes years, sometimes decades to follow, follow along. So an example of a leading indicator and a lagging indicator that's really concrete. If your roof is leaking, you're gonna have a couple of different points of data. A lagging indicator is gonna be the humidity levels in your home. Those humidity levels are gonna slowly rise because of that leak. And the longer you wait, the higher your humidity level's gonna get. Till some point, you go, maybe after six months, you go, "There's gotta be something wrong here, because this humidity level is crazy." A leading indicator is when it drips on your head. It happens, you know it, and you know you need to do something about it. And you're probably gonna do something about it soon. So that's language that I'm gonna use when I go through this as we sort through some of these data points. Because I think that helps us make sense of what we're doing and what we're seeing, but it sets our expectations reasonably. So we're not, we're not expecting things to happen that we haven't necessarily given enough time for them to happen. Proxy is something that I think is, is useful in these conversations, too. All of these assessments really are proxies. None of these assessments can tell you exactly how a kid reads. It's a proxy for if they can read or not. You can have a kid who can read incredibly well, and they test poorly. So in that case, the proxy is not doing a good job of actually showing you how they're doing. So, so keeping in mind that if you really want to see if a kid can read or not, watch them read for a long time. Well, that's not an assessment, that's real life. All of these assessments are proxies, where we try to see if a, if a kid can do something or know something. But it's, it's not a stand-in for the real thing, if that makes sense. Questions on those three terms? Okay. Keeping in mind that the board did us, did set a goal of data literacy, and that's why you might go, "Well, this is silly, just show us the numbers." I want to be mindful that I'm always giving you as much context and information as I can to help you understand the numbers and get better at looking at the numbers. So the VT cap, the Vermont Comprehensive Assessment Program, we started two years ago. We have some data there, but we have very little data there. And that's the kind of frustrating part. Those took the place of S-BAC assessments. S-BAC, we've seen trends, but because we don't have this year's VT cap scores yet, we can't really do anything with that. The main purpose of these assessments is state-federal accountability. If you remember, No Child Left Behind, No Child Left Behind has been renewed as the Every Student Succeeds Act. And it still calls for the same kind of state-level accountability measures. These are absolutely lagging indicators. When we look at, yeah, Lynn?
No, go ahead. Finish.
When we look at assessments, out of all the assessments we look at, this is pretty much the biggest lagging indicator we have. It's gonna take the longest to turn around, if that makes sense. Go ahead.
Yeah. So... We don't have this year's Vermont cap scores.
Correct.
When might we expect them?
August. And I can absolutely give an update when we have those.
So those scores...
From this past spring.
From this past school year?
Yes. Yeah.
That we get in August?
Yeah.
Okay.
Which, they're lagging indicators, so it's, it's, you know, gosh, we can't really do much with them when we get them that far after. S-BAC had gotten into a pretty good rhythm of, we could get S-BAC scores about 10 days after the assessment.
Right.
Which, you know, when you've, when you've worked all year long and you take an assessment in May, it's kind of hard to do anything with that information as a teacher in May. It's good to know, you know, and you can think about it and reflect a little bit on it. But when you get it in August, there's, there's next to nothing you can do with it, which is kind of, kind of a shame. So I did want to bring historical S-BAC scores to you, because that's really the, the, from a lagging indicator standpoint. I, I want you to see where things have been going leading up to two years ago. So this is old, old data. But I think it's interesting to look at this, because these have the Vermont trends in red and our trends in blue. And I think, interestingly, you can notice something in these cohorts. You know, these are some cohorts that just came out of COVID. You can see some of these cohorts, we have data far enough back that it tracks them through COVID. So if we go back to 2016 cohort, or a 2018 cohort, 2017 cohort, you can see these big dips along the way. But I do think an interesting thing, we can see the last year of S-BAC data. You know, I wonder what you notice there.
So this is the same group of kids in third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, seventh, eighth grade?
Correct. That is tracking one set of kids. Which I think can be one of the best ways to look at this data. If we look at, how was fourth grade doing every year? Well, it's a different group of kids every year.
Right.
There are some variables that change and some that stay the way, stay the same. If we want to look at these scores, I think with the biggest picture view, looking at a cohort, I think is helpful. Does anybody notice anything about those that's worth mention?
Did the tests not happen at some point during COVID?
We had a year correct.
Notice there's a number?
Yes. We had one year where there was no test, correct. That's a great thing to notice. Yeah. So if you see, like, third grade, fourth grade, sixth grade, seventh grade?
Yeah.
And wow, that really appears to be where that line drops a lot. So that gives you a really clear idea of where the COVID years were, and that gap year in testing. So great thing to notice, Stephen.
I mean, what are, is it like 20%? Like, they're falling in the 20% pile? What is this?
Yeah, that, great question, Kimberly. What this is showing you is the amount of students who are proficient. So your proficiency levels, when you're looking at these, I'll, I'll do the 2018, the 2022 cohort here. When you're looking at Mill River, we were hovering around 40% of our students were considered proficient. 60% of our students were not considered proficient at the start of this third grade cohort here. Other things you notice, or questions you have?
Well, just that there's no data from Vermont for, for some of the years.
Yeah.
Looks like it's starting to generally bump up maybe, or level off again?
Yeah, I think the, I think the, the hopeful piece of this is, yeah, we can see the impact of the COVID years there. But this is even the math scores, and the math scores were the ones we were a little more concerned about coming out of COVID. But there's a little hopeful bump there. But again, remember, that's three years ago. That's how old this is. But I didn't want to not give you any reminder of this data. ELA scores, I think you'll notice somewhat similar things. You might notice that the proficiency levels at the state and locally are a little higher. You'll notice that the trend lines tend to be similar from Mill River and the state. You might notice...
They don't drop off as much, which...
Correct.
Leads me to believe that...
It said they don't drop off as much?
Yeah. COVID, COVID had a...
Less.
Less of an impact on, on those reading scores, absolutely. I think all fair things to notice. And again, three years ago. So this is fairly old. Now, the frustrating thing is, this is what we have for VT cap right now. I have a dot. Because we have one year's worth of scores. That's all we have. Two years ago, we have scores. Last year, we don't have scores. Three years ago, we had our last S-BAC assessment. So that, it's an indicator that we look at and we bring to you, and we do have conversations about. But gosh, it's not the first one we go to, because it's not the most timely, and it's not always the most useful. I do think looking at these in the context of state-level trends is useful, because it gives us a good context for what we... If, if what is happening is very local, or if what is happening has something to do with things that everybody's experiencing, like COVID.
Yeah.
So when we get the Vermont E-CAP scores... Is there some analysis as to how they compare to S-BAC? Would there be any...
I haven't seen anything. And when, when S-BAC came out and replaced E-CAP, there was not a lot at that point either, except all the feedback we got was, "Don't try and compare them." So...
Yeah, no, I mean, it's just, you know, if you get scores that appear really high or lower, what does it mean?
You know, I think...
If there's no comparison in the testing, it's, yeah.
And I think that's where that state-level data does help, too, because if, if S-BAC isn't comparable with VT cap, at least we can see where we are in the context of our peers.
Right.
And that gives us something that's better than, you know, nothing.
How long is Vermont cap gonna be around?
Great question. Great question. And that's a decision that the State Board of Education makes. You know, that's something that the, the field had not a ton of input, not a ton of direct input on. There was actually something that happened that we weren't really aware was happening, actually. There was not a lot of engagement with, with the field from the agency on that.
Right.
So...
And that's, and I guess, I'll just say this publicly, because I want to go on record, by saying, it's very difficult for us to measure student success or not when they keep, when the state, let me be specific, keeps changing the assessment.
I wonder, and I, I agree with that, Lynn, I do agree with that. I wonder if the state's perspective is, this is for federal accountability. This is, this is for the state to have a pl... This is, this is for the state to have a plan where if schools are struggling, the state needs to step in and if schools are doing okay, the state doesn't. And they, they don't think it's for the schools. If they think it's for the work that they do more than anything else.
Yeah.
The state does require us to have another local assessment. So this, they might be thinking, you have your local assessment, that's what you use to know if you're doing okay? This is for us to decide if you're doing okay or not. So still would be nice to have.
There's a little frustration.
Yeah.
On my part.
Still would be nice to have scores that we could do something with.
Instead of a dot.
You know, and, and there was a lot of conversation when kneecap went away. We used to get great data back from kneecap. We got item level analysis.
Yeah.
When I was down the hallway as an English teacher, I would get a kneecap report back that would tell me how my kids did on one question.
On every single kid.
Yeah.
On every single question.
And I could, I could go, wow, all my kids missed this one question, but all my kids got this one question right.
Yeah.
You know, and I could do a lot to change, you know, that, that was very useful for me, even as a lagging indicator. It was still useful for me.
Yeah.
So it goes, we didn't have that with S back. We were thinking we were going to have that with VT cap, but we have yet to see that we're going to get anything like that. So.
So with S back.
Yep.
How much do you care about the numbers?
Yeah.
I know we're kind of talking around that, but.
Yeah.
I mean, they're not great numbers.
Yeah.
But, yeah.
Yeah. So, so if you ask, so what do I do with that information? That might be the best way to answer that question. When we look at S back scores, we look at S back scores, keeping in mind that they're a lagging indicator. We want to see upward trends, but we don't, we don't work specifically to cause those upward trends because we know that that's going to take so long to happen that it's, it's not the best use of our time. But if we focus on the leading indicators and we're, we're able to shift the needle with those leading indicators, we expect that the lagging indicators are going to be there too. So we focus a lot more on other data points and then we glance over at S back or VT cap to go, okay, something's kind of registering there too. So we spend a lot of time here, but we kind of check over there as a, just to make sure that we're not misinterpreting our better local data. So it's, it's, it's kind of like you go to a doctor to get a second opinion. You might spend a bunch of time with your primary care physician, but then get a second opinion real quick. These scores are our second opinion. Does that, does that help?
Yeah, I think as a parent, sometimes like when you see something like this, you go, oh.
Yeah.
And then you have like your child's personal.
Yeah.
Grades and the feedback there.
Yeah.
But you also, there's a lot of unknown of like, how is that teacher gauging?
Yeah.
And like, so.
Yeah.
I think you do take this stuff into consideration as a parent.
Yeah.
And so I appreciate thinking through it as like a well, more well-rounded.
Yeah.
Picture instead of, set of data points, and it still can be a little bit like, ooh, that's not where we really want to be.
Well, and I think the really interesting thing about that, Kim, is, you know, I'd say, that's not where the state wants to be.
Sure.
And if you look at even bigger data point, if anybody's familiar with the NAEP testing, NAEP testing is a national thing because S back was just by, state by state, kind of regional. So S back, we could, and there's a reason I show you Vermont scores in comparison. There's no such thing as a national S back comparison. I can't even compare S back in Vermont to S back in Washington State because those were administered in a way at the state level that they never released those results so that we could compare it on a wider scale. But NAEP testing is national. NAEP testing has, for the last 30 years, I think it started in the seventies, don't quote me on that, but for the last 30 years, NAEP scores have been pretty much flatline, trending down maybe a little. So I think our, our country is in a similar boat. I know that doesn't make one parent with their one child feel any better necessarily, but I think it's interesting context. It is.
It is, and it's helpful because so much of data, right, is like how you.
Yeah.
Talk about it.
Yeah.
Tell the story, so, okay.
And Kim, if, if, I think maybe another way to answer that question is, gosh, can we do something this year and make a huge difference and turn these scores around? I think, no. They're lagging indicators. If we have a student who gets to fifth grade and is a very struggling reader, maybe they're reading on a second grade level, to get a, to get a student on a second grade level back up to a fifth grade reading level, we can't do that in a year. Then you add in the behavioral challenges we've been having post-COVID. You add in the social emotional challenges we've been having post-COVID and you go, wow. We're, we're in really good shape if we're trending up a little. I, I think that's the really challenging thing because we all want to change it quickly. We all do. But these lagging indicators like S back scores, we can't. So that one individual student, and I know this, this feels really bad, that one individual student, we may not be able to help them. But we can slowly work as a system to get to a point where we can help kids like that better. And I think that's, that's really challenging. That's really challenging.
So do you get a score for each child?
Yep.
Okay.
Absolutely.
And the VT.
And caregivers will get that score report. Yeah. You know, if a student is scoring in the 50th percentile, a year from now, they're not going to be in the 90th. But if we keep working as a system, you know, a decade from now, that student might never have scored in the 50th percentile. Does that make sense? So we can't go back and make up for what, what's happened over the last handful of years, but we can work in a way that we try not to let that happen again.
That's actually bring, so a helpful way for parents maybe to look at their child's individual.
Yeah.
Scores is maybe like seeing if there is some, you know, growth a little bit.
Yes, absolutely. And that great segue to looking at star reading and star math, that is our local assessment. We've used that for a long time. This can be lagging or leading, depending on how you look at it. If we look at proficiency levels, they're lagging. But Kim, like you said, if we look at growth measures, growth is really a leading indicator. And I have two different ways of looking at this data that I'll, that I'll show you that. This really, I told you the purpose of our state testing, that's really for state federal accountability. The purpose of our local star scores, that's for classroom teachers to identify where students are and track their progress. So that's far more relevant, useful information. It's still not the best. Those classroom assessments that are given on any given day of the week are still the best things that happen. Star happens three times a year. So you can only get so much out of it doing it three times a year, but it is far better than those state accountability measures. So I'm going to show you the lagging indicators first, because I just told you that star could be lagging or leading. Here's the lagging indicator. This again is showing you the number of students who are proficient. So this is not about growth. This is about the number of students who are proficient. You can see, and this is picking up a little more, little more recently, you see through spring 2024, you see that we had a lot of erratic stuff right around here in 2020, which we would expect a little bit. And then you can see some, some turnaround after that. And sorry, I want to, I want to not tell you what I see, but I'm curious what you see. So this has a lagging indicator for math. Anything you notice there?
Part that's confusing here for me.
Yeah.
Is comparing this to the math, S back.
Yep.
Math score.
Yep.
As I look at this, I'm seeing in the year 2022-ish.
Yep.
That the district is showing something like 52%.
Yep.
Are meeting standards.
Yep.
And when I look back at this S back page, I see it like 20%.
Yep.
So, so the.
So why are those different?
Standards on these two tests?
It is.
What does this mean?
Awesome thing to notice. Yes, they are, they are two different standards and they don't always agree. You can use star math as a proxy for how are kids going to do on the S back? So you can predict. So you could look at these trend lines and go, wow, the trend lines look similar, but they're, you know, 10, 15 points apart. Well, that's how you can predict success on S back. That's how it can be a proxy. So star scores are normed nationally. So that means all of the kids in the country that take those star scores, you, 50th percentile is 50th percentile. That's average, that's the middle. And depending on who takes the test and how they, how they do, that 50th percentile shifts. So it's, it's norm referenced. So across the country, that's going to be paying attention to, you know, half the kids are above, half the kids are below. With the S back, it was a cut score. And they got, they got professionals together in a room and they said, what is proficient? And they all agreed, this is proficient. So while that norming can shift over time, those cut scores, I think a lot of people would argue that those were more, more stringent requirements, that it was harder to show proficiency on the S back.
Okay. And that, and that holds true, that's similar with the new V cap or whatever?
I, I would expect that, yes, but I don't, I haven't seen enough.
It's like a cut score, kind of?
Yes, it's not going to be normed in the same way.
Yep. Okay.
Yep. No, good question.
Is the V cap similar to the S back in, in the amount of time that students spend on that?
That's a great question, too.
That we felt for third graders especially, that's a long time on a screen.
Absolutely. Yeah, the VT cap, the VT cap timeline is pretty similar. And that's another difference. You could look at these scores and go, wow, the scores, the star scores tend to, even the lagging star scores tend to look a little better. Well, when a, when a student has to sit for a 30-minute assessment, maybe 20 minutes even, star can be about 20 to 30 minutes versus a two-hour assessment. There may be some students who perform better because they just check out, you know, they don't have the stamina, they don't persevere as much. So that's a good, good thing to notice, too. That's a good question. So we have the lagging indicators, the math, we have the lagging indicators there for the reading. And I think again, you see in math, you have some similar dips like we saw with the S back math, not as much of the dip with the reading, little more of an upturn with the reading on our star scores. But again, that's the lagging indicator. Here, I'm going to show you something that's more of a leading indicator with star math. Now, this is really interesting. This is showing our elementary students over the last three years. So if you're thinking about, over the last three years, they're going to test in the fall, the winter, and the spring. And you're going to notice a couple of things happen in that pattern of fall, winter, spring, fall, winter, spring, fall, winter, spring. You're going to notice that, well, sorry, what do you notice?
Little regression.
Yeah, yeah. Often, there's something lost in the summer. What else do you notice?
Spring's a good time of year.
Yeah, often, often there is a growth that keeps going through the spring. Often, your larger growth is fall to winter. Is that because students are learning more? Or is that because they test differently? Hard to say. If you look at Mill River math.
Well, I, I was just gonna, I was thinking about that. I mean, I think if, if kids have learned things, learned something, and then, you know, basically the beginning of the school year might be a review, and then they can, they come way up and then you start introducing new material, then obviously their progress is going to level off a little bit. And I think.
That could absolutely have something to do with that.
The line from the spring to the fall kind of gives, it seems like it's dropping off all of spring.
Yeah.
But it's, I don't, I doubt it is.
No, good things to notice. One thing I want to call your attention to before we look at the next one, 950 to 990, we're talking about big swings here when we look at these, which I think is interesting. Mill River math, this is a little more interesting. This is not, you're not seeing the same patterns. With our elementary schools, we have four of them. So we have a more stable data set. So say we have a fourth grade teacher who changes, well, we have three other fourth grade teachers who didn't. You have a second grade teacher who changes too, well, we have three other second grade teachers who didn't. Maybe our third grade was consistent. So you have a, a larger data set when it comes to variables, and I think we see those patterns more at the elementary level because of that. When you get up here to the middle school, you have your math teacher. Everybody has that math teacher. So there are fewer variables coming into play there. Also interesting, I think, worth noting, the scale on here, where we were talking about a large spread from 950 to 990, about 40 points. Here, we're only talking about, about 10 points. When you look at this one, overall, your growth may have been 10 points. You're still seeing about that, that, that bit of growth here, but it looks a little more extreme on this graph. Just want to point that out. This dip is not the same as the dip in the graph right before it, even though it kind of looks like it. Elementary reading, you see some similar things happen in there, too. I think you have, you have a steeper trend line from your math. You know, I think we've done far more work with reading, especially at our, at our primary levels than we have with math. I think that's evident here. I think that has something to do with it. Does it explain it all? Probably not. I think that's worth noting. Mill River reading, again, you have, everybody gets into one grade with one teacher, so you have fewer variables. So when things shift, sometimes they have, I think, more of an impact on the data. Again, here you are, you're not looking at as large of a spread of points either. This is only about 20 points that we're looking at and rebounding.
What grades at Mill River take the star?
Star is going to be seven through 12.
Okay, every student.
Historically, we did not do 12th grade. So that's another interesting thing to think about, and thank you for asking that, Pat. When you look at the 22, 23 year, that might have been the first year that we added seniors in. So that's an interesting thing to think about.
Yeah, because I noticed it dropped in both.
Math and.
Math and reading.
Reading. And you heard, you heard this spring, we were talking at a board meeting where we talked about those seniors and how actually the, the completion rate for seniors was pretty low. So you would have students who just would blow it off or not take it. And that was a concern that we talked about trying to address this coming year. You know, when you have some students who just blow it off and don't take it, or you have some who start and just barely finish, that's going to affect your scores, so. I did want to show this, throw this back in here. You can't read it. I'm not worried about you being able to read it because you saw it before. But I want to remind you that while, while star can be a pretty good leading indicator and show us if things are working or not, if you wanted to ask a question about, is our new literacy program working? You could guess that it is by looking at the difference between your elementary math and your elementary reading. Yeah, people are working hard, we're making growth, but gosh, we're seeing more growth in reading. But that's still a bit of a stretch to be able to say that. It really is. This is data that Deborah Gardner-Brosh brought to you in the spring, specifically looking at our reading program and looking at gains that we're seeing here. So this is even a more fine-grained piece of data that I think is even more of a leading indicator. that I think is even more of a leading indicator. So we have some good evidence that our reading program is working. It's not just these STAR scores. But we like to look at the STAR scores as a second opinion. We like to look at our state test as a third opinion. If we're seeing that this very small, fine-grained data set is showing improvement and our teachers are excited about it, great. Do we see it in our STAR scores? Oh, we kind of do. Great, do we see it in our state-level assessments? Ask me in August.
Yeah, we don't know.
But I think, I wanted to throw this in as a reminder that just because we're talking about state testing and high-level STAR scores doesn't mean that's the only thing we do in district. And Deborah brought some of that great stuff to you earlier. Questions on that assessment stuff? Because I'm going to wrap up the assessment piece.
Yeah, I just noticed that it looks like the STAR scores for elementary math and reading seem to have a little bit less vigorous of a spring this year compared to previous years. Is that, do we have any thoughts for why?
No, that's a good question, that the growth wasn't quite as much as we've seen in the past. I don't know, Stephen, I don't know. I think it was a hard year. I don't know if folks were getting tired.
Pooling of all the elementary schools?
Yes, correct.
Do they take these on the same day or it's spread out?
No, not necessarily. They have a window that will take it at the end of the year. So that spring test, actually, we would probably be more accurate calling it late spring because that tends to sometimes be the last thing our kids do, in June even. Like, early June, that might be what they're doing. Because they really spend a lot of, like, let's say, if winter is January and spring is June, we're doing all that state testing right here in the middle. Which is another interesting reason why you go, well, why do we see more growth fall to winter? Well, we don't have any other assessments in there. Then you hit January and you go, where's my state science test? Where's my state ELA test? Where's my state math test? The ELA one takes three hours, the math one might take two hours, the science one will take you an hour and a half, you know. I worry sometimes that we are doing far too much assessment in the spring, really, you know, so. But that is a good question. Good thing to notice, Stephen, absolutely. Other assessment questions? Things you noticed, things you're wondering?
Thanks for adding this page.
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. Good to move on, past assessment? Okay. I will do that annually with the board, absolutely. But I'm going to keep asking our teachers and other folks to bring data throughout the year because I don't want the only data to come from me. I want you to be seeing those wonderful things like Deborah was bringing to you or even some of our teachers were bringing, so that you can see what's happening on a more finer grain than that. But I will always bring that big overview annually. Staff retention, I've presented on this the last two summers as well. So here's where we are this summer.
But staff, does that include?
That includes everybody.
Everybody.
So everybody except bus drivers. And that's just a funny thing that I was talking with Chad in the business office, getting these numbers. Looking back at these numbers, because I wasn't doing these back here, so I had to do a little bit of sleuthing. These are numbers without bus drivers. So that's just a funky thing to know, that our bus drivers aren't in there. But everybody else is in there. And I left them out when I did this, just because I didn't want to create data that didn't line up.
I'd be curious to know, you know, I mean, obviously, it's been an increase in employees. I'd be interested to know the numbers by employee category. I don't know if anybody else, you know, how many of the, how many?
I can give you a ballpark.
Well, I think a chart like this, but just have it broken out, teachers.
How specifically do you want it broken out?
I think teachers, paras,
administrators.
Administrators, secretarial.
Okay, hold on. Teachers, paras, admin. Like admin assistants, you mean?
Yeah. However, they're broken down, because they're all part of the union, right? So you must have categories of.
And do you want me to get, so para, so support staff, I could get as specific as, you know, do you want to know, like, our nursing staff broken out? Do you want to know our pre-K paras broken out?
I think support, personally, for me, support staff would be fine.
Okay. But if I do support staff, then everybody's going to be in one bucket. And I'll have certified, non-certified. So I'll have two categories.
Well, yeah, do what you think would be the most clarifying in terms of, you know, tracking the different categories. Like, I think teachers, paraeducators, administrators would be, we'd want those broken out, and then staff, you know, then just give it to us and then we can ask, you know, well, what does this mean or whatever?
Now, are you also talking about going back and doing that for the historical data?
Yeah, like this chart, just under total employees.
Just, that might take me a very, very long time to sort through. That might be really hard, because this was not data that I had my hands in. So I don't have that. It could be done, but I want to be just transparent. It would take a really long amount of time. To do that going forward would be the easiest thing in the world.
You might want to look at, when we did the board goals previously, in the past, I'm talking three, four, five years ago, that retention stuff was there.
That's what this is from.
Okay.
So this is the historical stuff from that. Yeah, thank you, Lynn. That's where I got it. And I just started adding to it. Yeah, I mean, if you wanted to.
I remember looking at it.
Yeah.
Way back when.
Yeah.
When we had it as part of our board goals, we talked about retention rate.
You know, like in the 2021 year, we had five terminations, including RIFs. I could try and find out who those people were, but I'd have to be digging through a lot of files to find out how many of those were teachers and how many were not. Going forward, I don't mind at all doing that.
I mean, whatever you can get in that area, I would be interested in just seeing, you know, how, like, I guess I'm thinking teachers, paraeducators, administrators, and then support staff. And, you know, we can see from the chart that, you know, it was pretty level from 18 to 22. 23, we went up five. 24, we went up six. And I'm just curious as to what staff is, are we adding to?
Are you just wondering about this total employees line, Carol? Or do you want to know that for all lines?
I think, I think I would be, I mean, I'm just thinking off the top of my head right now, but I think I would be most interested in total employees.
Okay.
Yeah.
That would be a little easier to track. That would be a little easier to track. I can tell you, I will look over that. I can tell you that briefly, there's been a trend down in paraeducators. There's been a trend up in certified staff. There's been a trend down in administrators through those six years.
Yeah, I guess that would, I would be most interested in that at this point. And it's not broken down by school, so we won't know.
No, 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 no.
Okay. Yeah, if you can get that, I don't know if other people are interested, and it seemed to be.
I'll try and dig that up. And I'll see how far back I can get.
Yeah, whatever you can get, yeah, don't, you know. I'm sure, don't make it your priority, obviously.
Okay. Things folks notice or questions folks have?
So seeing none, I'm going to move us along. But I guess that's my job. Next on the agenda is the five-year facilities plan update.
So that should have been.
Let me just back up. Any other questions on the data, data, whatever you want to call it, those numbers? And retention rate. So we're all okay with that. And Brian?
Yep.
You have an idea of what we want to keep looking for?
Absolutely, absolutely.
So then, next on the agenda is the five-year facilities plan update.
Throw that up here. So I am bringing this to you because we have board policy that requires that we bring this to the full board annually. This is something that I actually think the board has seen several times this year, which is fantastic and I think worth noting. I think it makes far more sense for this to be used on more of an ongoing basis than annually. Two years ago, we were trying to work really hard to get B&amp;G back online using a five-year plan. We had one, but it was a little old and it hadn't been used very frequently. It maybe was only brought to the board annually. So what we started doing was bringing this five-year plan to every B&amp;G meeting. And actually, something that I didn't attach in the materials tonight, but working with Tim, we had even put together a proposals sheet. I'll pull that up real quick. And this proposal sheet, I think, was great because this gave a really, a smaller lens to that five-year plan. You can look at that five-year plan and it can be a little overwhelming to have one meeting around trying to figure out what you're going to do. But working with Tim, we had put together what are a couple of priority projects for each site so that the B&amp;G committee could be looking at that and identifying where they wanted to go next. So I think, from my perspective, I've seen B&amp;G working with Tim, doing a pretty good job of starting to spend some of that building fund money that we have and really mark some projects off the list. So I think we're in better shape than we were. And I would love to see that keep going. B&amp;G Chair?
I'm sorry?
No, I think that's Nick.
Is Nick B&amp;G Chair? Yeah, Nick.
And I'll just say, you know, coming to it, you know, in the last couple of months, it was really helpful to go down and see what was planned for 23, 24 that didn't get done and talking about why things didn't get done. And what did get done, which quite a bit did get done. But a lot of them are like, this is when we're going to do it, but it takes three years or four years anyway. So it's almost like that 23, 24 was the beginning of the process of following up on the project, you know.
Well, thanks for adding that. Stephen, are you on B&amp;G?
Yeah, yeah. We asked for some time, maybe before the next meeting, to get an updated version of this. And then maybe we should have like a live version somewhere that we're all working off as well. Because I don't know that we have that.
I always attach the PDF, but Tim has the live version. So if the committee wanted to pull one up and work on it together, Tim can facilitate that, definitely. I try not to link anything but PDFs as materials because I don't want things to get changed by accident in the meantime. But that's a good point, Stephen. This one, Tim did update this one to move a lot of the 23, 24 things that didn't get done into that 24, 25 column.
We talked about that at the last meeting.
This is super specific, but for MRU, paving, is it also marking?
Oh, good question. I bet no. I bet no, because the paving has been on hold for a while because of our stormwater runoff thing. So while we wanted to do that, we can't. We can re-line. We do that, I want to say we do that annually. Yeah. It seems like we do. If it's not annually, it's definitely every two years or so. Because that stuff always wears off over the winter. Yeah.
That's an example of something that was on 23, 24 and couldn't get done. So there's likes.
Well, and that stormwater issue is huge. Until we get a response to figure out that.
And we're very close and I think we're safe here. So I think that's a project that can get looked at. Yeah, for sure.
Anything else on the building plan?
And again, this is something that I will bring annually to the board because policy calls for it. But I think great that this gets used far more than just annually.
Well, I think it would be helpful if Building and Grounds Committee brings it to the board on a regular basis as well. That's just my suggestion.
You know, and something, a policy committee could look at that policy and think about that annual requirement. Maybe an annual requirement to bring a five-year plan to the board doesn't make sense. Maybe that policy having a requirement that the B&amp;G committee update it quarterly makes more sense. You know, let's shift our policy in a way that it sustains things that we see working better. Okay.
Sure, we can do that.
Oh, that's right, you're Chair Policy now?
No.
No.
I'm just one of the minions.
Do we have a new policy chair?
Nick.
Nick, okay. I thought we had somebody, okay. Okay, sorry, Lynn, you were trying.
At least as of now, I'm not there, but I mean, you know, who knows?
Anything that could change.
The way we're going here.
Sorry, you were trying to wrap up and I threw that back in.
Okay, anything else? All right, then we're going to move right along. And we're going to go to committee reports. And that would be personnel. And I guess that would be me. We have a couple of contracts tonight. We did not have a personnel committee meeting. But Brian had sent me these contracts and asked if we could bring them, if we could address them tonight. So we have two. First one, I'll make a motion to offer a teacher's employment contract to Justin Bouvier as an alternative education, as an alternative educator at Mill River, grade seven through 12, 1.0 full-time equivalency. That's my motion.
I'll second. Go ahead. Somebody else seconded, whoever you write down is fine.
Discussion. I have questions.
Yep.
If I may. Is this a replacement?
Yes, this was where we had talked about, last year, we had had grant-funded Dina students for several years, taking advantage of some of our ESSER funding. We were planning, but we ended up finding title funding that would cover it. We had a surplus of title funding that we were allowed to carry over due to the pandemic. So we can't carry this position in the grant anymore. And we had added this to the budget in the fall as part of our budget season work. This is a rebranding of that dean position. So Kalen really sat down and looked at what were the pieces of the position that were working to serve students and what were the pieces that weren't. And she had written up a proposal that we brought during budget season so that finance could really look at that and make sense of if that made sense. Is that?
Yep. Any other questions?
I guess I don't totally understand what the class and the education.
So this is really going to be a classroom teacher, but they're not going to be a classroom teacher who has a schedule that reads like, this block, I'm teaching English 9. This block, I'm teaching English 10. They're going to have a group of students that they're trying to meet their needs during that block. And you may have some students who need math in that block because they're struggling in their regular math class. You may have some students who are struggling in ELA and need support there. So it's going to be a teacher who can work in that classroom teacher capacity, but with a role that is far more responsive to students' needs, if that makes sense. You're not going to see 20 kids in that room. You're, you're not going to see 20 kids in that room. You might see 10.
I noticed like their background isn't like they were assistant principal for, yeah, I was just curious if that came up at all in the-
Yeah. You know, historically, that dean of students position was kind of half disciplinary, half alternative education. So I think, I think somebody having a background in administration is useful. But I think the teaching background is what Sean was a little more interested in. I think the admin background is great. I think it helps, but I think the primary focus was, was on the education piece. Because that's going to be, that's the shift that this role is going to be more of an educational role.
Is this going to be this geared towards students getting credits for graduation? Is this, I mean, it's high school, right?
Yes, it's, it, I think it's, it's safe to say that the focus is going to be high school and the focus is going to be credit. So if a student is just not able to get the credits that they need, trying to put them in an alternative program where they can try and get the credits. Yep, good question.
Any other questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, thank you. Next is, and I'll make a motion that we approve the agreement between the Mill River Reunion School District and the Rotten County Sheriff's Department for our school resource officer.
And authorize superintendent to sign.
And authorize the superintendent to sign, as I said. So that's a motion.
I'll second it.
There we go. Discussion.
Is it going to still be?
Yep.
What is he, what's his name? Kaufman, Joe? I don't remember.
Yep. Absolutely. And I think that, that matters a lot to us.
For sure.
He's got, he's got a really strong relationship with a lot of our staff and our students. And I think that's the important part of the job.
And I, and I say this every year and I'll say it again. As a person who was totally opposed to a school resource officer, because I thought it was worthless. But then found out how they could be better utilized. And it's, it's a tremendous asset to the school and the community, really. So I, I've come a long way around from when I left here and was like, no way. And now I'm, I, I don't think. If you have a good one, you got to keep it.
We do.
Or her.
We do. The PEG TV record will show that Len does say that every year.
And I do, because I think it's important.
Yep, yep, yep.
Interesting. It's the first time I've heard it, so.
Well, if I can, I'll piggyback on that just a little. And that is that the thing that I was similar to Len, I was like, well, you know, why are we doing this? But I think that the kids start to see law enforcement as not just a punitive process-
Right, right.
That they're going to go through and-
There's a ton of contacts and opportunities with kids and staff that, that are tremendously helpful. And they can, once they, once they establish those contacts, the, the kids and staff can go to him or her and feel safe in talking about things, which is huge. Huge. Okay. So personnel's done. Our next meeting-
All in favor?
Oh, I'm sorry.
All good.
All those in favor? Thank you. Keep me in line. Next personnel meeting is August 7th, I believe. Eight, seven.
I think you're right. Yep.
Which is my anniversary.
Oh, nice.
What better way to spend it?
Eight, I, we were married eight, seven, eight, seven. That way, it's easy for Lenny to remember.
Len, do you want to do a 6:30 or a six meeting for that?
Let's do a 6:30. I think we'll be okay. The other thing is Andrea and I met with Brian, this is personnel. What, Tuesday?
Last week? Last Tuesday.
Yeah.
Last Tuesday.
And we went over the superintendent evaluation. And maybe everyone hasn't got the copy of it. I will send that out. I meant to send it out. I know folks in the personnel committee received it. And, and I, I think it, it went well. We got some good feedback. And I'm going to set up a meeting with BJ so that we can tweak the whole evaluation thing as we go forward. But I will get that out to everybody tomorrow.
And I'll say, my perspective, that meeting, meeting with Len and Andrea, great to have specific actionable feedback for, these are the things that we see going on. Here's where we see things working. Here's where we want things to keep going and get better.
Yeah.
I think that's, that's hugely useful.
We're-
I appreciate that.
We're doing a better job of looking at next steps. I think we, we did a good job of that this time.
Absolutely.
But we're learning.
Yep.
Yes.
I have a different question pertaining to personnel. Do we have any unfilled vacancies that will need to be filled before the school?
So we have a couple in the pipeline. I think the only vacancies that we don't have, which will be bringing the personnel, the only ones we don't have in the works right now are paraeducators.
You said foreign language, though.
Oh, sorry. Thank you, thank you. Foreign language, yeah. And that was the one that we were-
Oh, yeah.
You know, worried. We posted that and, you know, the budget cleared and we posted that, I want to say, maybe early May? Early May or so? Because we have to wait 30 days for the budget, after-budget vote to make sure nobody appeals or recount or anything.
That was a world language position.
Yeah. That was the one we were concerned that we weren't going to get many applicants and we haven't.
Yeah.
Yeah. Unfortunately. No, good question, Pat. Thank you.
Anything else under personnel? Okay. Policy. So I think we need, and, and I'm winging this, folks, so if anybody knows any better, please jump in. The second reading to adopt B-10, which is the-
Tobacco.
Tobacco policy. And so this would be for approval?
For adoption.
For adoption. That's the word. So I would make a motion that we adopt B-10, formerly known as E-8.
A second.
Thank you, Kim. Discussion?
Oh, it looks much better.
Yeah, we, yeah. And I appreciate your input on that, Carol. That was- Any other discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. Opposed? Okay. Also, I guess I'll make a motion to approve E-6.
Prove or adopt?
Which is, I don't have it in front of me.
Safety and security of school facilities.
Okay. And I make that a motion.
To adopt.
To adopt.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Carol.
And I think that's a no-change one. That's just a-
Number.
Yeah, yeah. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you.
I'm just going to move.
First reading. A-8, which is, and I'm sorry, I don't have them in front of me.
Oh, and I don't have-
It's board member education.
Board member education. And A-9, which is, I don't have that either.
Board goal setting and evaluation.
And B-15.
Which is bonus payments to staff.
What is that one?
Bonus payments to staff.
Oh, yeah. That one Stan said we shouldn't get.
We don't want to get rid of it yet because if we're audited, we want to make sure that there's record of it, even though it's not currently being used.
Okay.
Yep.
Are there questions about that one?
So I guess I'll make a motion that we have a first reading for A-8, A-9, and B-15.
Can I do that?
I'll second.
Thank you. Great.
You're welcome.
Discussion.
A-9, board goal setting, is the only one that had edits. The other two are just updates, re-letter numbers, if that helps.
Yeah, we took, we kind of simplified A-9. There were more bullet points.
Any other discussion?
A-8, I had a question about that one. I mentioned something about new members are also encouraged to participate in a district orientation session, which-
We-
We, didn't we take that out?
No, we decided to leave it.
Yep.
In case there, there is one at some point.
It would be nice, actually. I'm in favor of it, but I thought I didn't get invited or something.
Yeah, I know. I, I, we did discuss it and we thought about taking it out, but we also thought it doesn't hurt to have it in there in case that there is. But we can, we can look at it again if it doesn't make sense.
Or maybe just develop an orientation session.
Well, we talked about that as well. Any other questions? Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? I'm staying. Okay. Building and grounds.
Shane, may I just say something about policy?
Absolutely.
Well, our next, our August meeting, which I, I can't off the top of my head know when that is. But I think we've invited BJ, right? Because there's going to be some discussion around the cameras.
Cameras, correct.
Eight, 13.
Eight, 13. Thank you.
I do think we had a question if the committee was going to stick to 5:30 or if change to 6:00. Is that?
I think we felt like we had so much to do that we thought it would be valuable to have an extra half hour.
Where? So keep 5:30? Okay. Awesome.
Thanks, Kim. Building and grounds.
Is that?
It's not here. I'm trying, I don't even remember the last meeting we had.
We've got one scheduled, but we haven't had one, right?
Oh.
Well, we had one.
In the, since the last board meeting?
So, that's when we went over the five-year plan, right?
Yeah, but I think, I think we did that at, didn't we talk about it at the last board meeting?
Twenty-fourth, yeah.
Your update from earlier.
Yep, you're right, you're right, you're right.
Oh, yeah, the update that we did, yeah, you did it. You covered it. We went over that.
Okay.
And, and that does look like Tim updated the, the five-year plan. So it was, yeah.
Had you said a next meeting? I thought there was a next meeting. No, that must have been the one I was thinking about.
I don't remember if we said it. That's, sorry.
Did you get minutes from that, Rebecca? Did we? And is there a next meeting on those minutes? Okay. All right. I guess we're going to have to touch base with Nick and see.
Okay, anything else? Buildings and grounds?
Oh, we do have minutes for that one. We do.
Does it have a next meeting date?
Eight, 26.
Ah, I could have probably looked at my calendar.
Eight, 26. And those are five o'clock meetings?
Yes.
Okay. So eight, 26, 5:00 p.m.
And policy is eight?
Thirteen.
Okay.
Five, 30.
Community engagement?
Yes, we met tonight. We continue to review our charge and try and plan how we want to approach community conversations. And I think we're going to try and encourage board members to attend, you know, different events that happen at the different schools. And we're going to contact principals around opening day activities and see if we can make some, be visible for people on opening day activities. But we've, we're still talking. And so our next meeting is going to be August 21st at 6:00.
Okay, thanks, Carol.
Anybody, anybody else have anything to add?
Negotiations?
Do you have one update? We have tentative agreement all around on all the pieces we were working through with the association. So we will plan to bring the full board, that tentative agreement for approval on eight, seven.
Just a question. I mean, we ended negotiations like over a month ago. Why does it take so long? I mean, I don't know.
Yeah.
That's why I'm asking to, to-
Yeah. So part of the work that happens once we reach an agreement is nailing down a lot of those details and having everybody verify that those details are accurate. And a lot of that happens around salary. So there's a lot of math to be done and a lot to be shared to look at, to verify before we package it and bring it to be ratified by the association and adopted by the board. So Stan, really, Stan's got to sit in his office and do a lot of math.
It, it just seems like it's taking a long time. That's all. In my opinion. But what do I know? Anything else under negotiations? Finance, pay orders?
I don't know exactly how this is supposed to go. Brian, would you, would you kick off the?
I will absolutely read those. I do not mind.
I'll try and do the payroll.
Sure. So we have accounts payable warrants stated 7/17/2024. So for fiscal year '24. So we are wrapping up last fiscal year with some of these. So general fund fiscal year '24 in the amount of $108,273.59. Another one fiscal year '24 in the amount of $7,820.3. That's totaling $116,093.62. Now FY '25, because we're in July, we have one in the amount of $369,802.84. Another FY '25 in the amount of $497.75. That total there is not accurate. So let me total that and get the appropriate total in the motion. So that totals $370,359.59 for FY '25. Student activities Mill River in the amount of $4,703.78. Student activities Shrewsbury in the amount of $237.71. Student activities Tinmithy in the amount of $500. Student activities Wallingford in the amount of $892.86. And that total is $6,334.35. So I would ask for a motion to approve as read.
A second. I had a question about one of the items in the check register. There was a charge for lawn-
Um, there was a charge for lawn care at Wes on June twentieth for eight hundred dollars, and I'm just wondering about that.
I believe that was a tree.
A tree?
Yeah. June twentieth?
Yeah.
Hmm. Let me talk to Tim and get back to you, because I think the tree that we did was after that. Um, I'll check.
Is it, for the same company? There's also stuff from Clarendon and Mill River as well.
What was the company?
Um, KGW Lawn Care.
Yeah. I'll che, I'll check with Tim and see. I do know we had a tree, but I think that was after that. So I'll check and I'll email board tomorrow.
Okay, thanks.
What that was.
Any other discussion? Questions?
Unless Stan knows. Did Stan hear that?
Uh, my guess was, I think, if Wallingford was involved, I, I think what happened was Tim was understaffed that week. And so he had, um, Mr. Williams mow Clarendon High School and Wallingford that week, I recollect. But that was the same time when I think some people were on vacation that week for regular custodial staff.
That just seems...
Because Wallingford normally doesn't get serviced by, by Mr. Williams. It's just Clarendon and, and Mill River.
It just seems like that's a lot of money to mow that lawn. You know, I, I asked Gary about how long it took him when he worked there, and he said about three hours. So that's about two hundred and sixty-seven dollars an hour, which is a lot, if you ask me.
Yeah, nope, fair.
What was for all three schools? Some people don't make that in a week.
Is it, it was for all three schools, though?
No, it was just Wes.
Just Wallingford?
Yeah, they're broken out. It was just one date.
I'll do it.
That's what Gary said. He said, call me back all the time.
I'll mow.
Thank you, Stan.
Thank you.
Sorry, I interrupted. You may be making the, uh, calling the question.
Anything else? We made the motion and it was seconded, right?
Mm-hmm.
All those in favor? Opposed? Abstain? Thank you. Um, do we have to, who's gonna sign them?
We do need to do that. Yep.
I don't want to make a motion saying I'm gonna sign them. Someone else...
Reauthorize.
Well, do, let's do payroll. Let's do payroll and then...
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought we were done.
No, no, no. No, it's goo, good to remind everybody we need to do that motion, too.
So to read the payroll warrants into the minutes, um, similar, we have fiscal year twenty-four and twenty-five on here. We have a regular payroll warrant for fiscal year twenty-four in the amount of two hundred, two hundred and eighty-six thousand, seven hundred and four and eighty-one cents um, from June twenty-first. And from June twenty-fifth in the amount of twenty-four thousand, three hundred, ninety-two and ninety-five cents. For fiscal year twenty-five, we have from July first, six thousand, eight hundred and thirteen and five cents. From July fifth, one hundred and thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and sixty-six and fifty cents. And from July fifth, thirty-four thousand, three hundred and eighty-eight and twenty cents for a total of, uh, blah, 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 blah. Yeah, two million, four hundred, eighty-five thousand, sixty-five and fifty-one cents. And make a motion to have that accepted into the record as read.
Second it.
Discussion? Okay. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstain? I would make a motion that we approve Stephen as chair of the Finance Committee to sign off on those.
Second that.
Discussion? All those in favor? Okay. Anything else under finance? Transact other legal business?
Oh, actually, uh, we don't have another meeting scheduled just yet, but for...
No.
On finance, I think I've, I've said... We might have one scheduled for September.
September, yeah.
I'm, I'm wondering if we maybe want to have sort of a strategy meeting in August. An earlier meeting for kind of our, discussing our sort of calendar timeline and how we'll maybe interact with the Community Engagement Committee as well.
Uh, absolutely. On board, if you want to do that, I would just recommend early August, not late August. Because late August will get really hectic.
When is our retreat?
August third is our retreat.
It's coming up. What's the regular meeting day for finance?
Oh, uh...
You know, for finance?
We'd been doing Thursdays for a while, but then, yeah, we were doing Thursdays mostly for finance.
At, you know, what time?
I can't.
We had been shifting them as early as we could, I think. Yeah.
What's the best day for you? I mean, there's two of us here. Who else is on finance, I think? I know, Stephen and I, Josh.
Josh is on, Doug, and Nick.
Nick, I think, yeah.
Yeah.
Anyway, we could try and connect by email maybe to...
Okay.
So, yeah, not, yeah, just more talking about the kind of upcoming budget season and how we'll sort of plan for it.
Yeah.
And work with communications on it.
Yeah, we can, we can try and shoot for something early August. Um, do you want me to send an email around to folks? Stephen, or do you want to do that?
Uh, you can do it.
Okay.
Thank you.
The Thursday would be the eighth of August.
Yep.
Stephen can't do Thursdays.
The day after your anniversary.
Stephen can't do Thursdays.
Oh, yeah, can't do Thursdays, but we'll figure something out.
At least for that, yeah, for that first one, I don't know if the Thursdays can work.
Okay.
Be good. Moving right on. Transact other legal business?
I don't have any puns, but I saw George Ambrose today. This is, was his favorite part of the board meeting agenda, it seemed. I just thought that was relevant to mention. George stopped by today and it was nice to see him. Otherwise, I got nothing.
Okay. Agenda building. Next meeting is August seventh?
Seventh, yep. And the only thing we have on our annual schedule, uh, and I think that's a reasonable thing to look at, um, on the ninth, because that'll be our first meeting of the annual schedule, only thing we have is board goals. And I think that's great because we have our retreat on the third. So if we have our retreat on the third, we'll be in really good shape to, uh, do that at the board meeting. Are there other things that we want to do at that board meeting? I...
I'd like to... I went... Obviously, it was too hot to work outside today, so I was in my cellar. And I found the Mill River Unified Union School District Board Committee descriptions, charge, purpose.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and you sent this to me, Brian, April eleventh...
Mm, mm-hmm.
Of this year.
Mm-hmm.
And I, I...
That was maybe the first time you asked about him, and I forgot I found him for you.
Yeah.
So I'm glad you found that.
Well, I did. And, and it was interesting because the Policy Committee, they not only had the description, but they had roles and responsibilities. Buildings and grounds, not only description, but roles and responsibilities. So I, I would like us at the retreat on August third to reexamine these.
Uh, Andrea?
More, more important to me, more important than the bylaws, because we can't do much with the bylaws since we're, we consolidated. I mean, it has to be, in order to change the bylaws, it has to be approved by everybody. You can't, we can't just tweak them.
I don't think.
By the whole board?
The board.
Yeah.
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 Yeah, yeah, yeah. So you bring up retreat. What I have down for retreat agenda is to look at our goals, uh, look at what we were able to do and what we didn't get to, and then revise them and make any changes we want to make to the goals. Uh, we also wanted to look again at our bylaws at the board committees. And then we were gonna spend some time talking about a more general roles, responsibilities of the board. I think it makes sense, the committee roles, responsibilities, to, to have that conversation there, too. Um, so I think we could walk away from the retreat, having those bylaws, changes, and proposals, and bring it to the full board. Is that, is that kind of where you're leaning?
I, I, yes, I gotta, I, I need to look more at the bylaws because the bylaws came about when we consolidated.
Yeah.
And there's a lot of things in the bylaws that restrict opportunities to change the bylaws.
Yeah. I, you know, I think there might be two different things. Bylaws might be simpler to change, but then in that document, we have the Articles of Incorporation.
Yeah, there you go.
That's the one I think we can't touch.
Yeah.
But committees and all that stuff lives in, in the bylaws.
Yeah.
Um...
Yeah.
Each member has to receive a copy of the proposed changes at least five days in advance. And we can do that at any warned board meeting. It doesn't even say that it has to be like a three-quarters vote or something. Oh, wait, no, no, no. Yeah, it has to be a two-thirds majority. So it can't just be a simple majority. It's gotta be a two-thirds majority. So I don't, we won't have that done in enough time to get it to the full board meeting, but we could bring a draft to the full board meeting.
Yeah, and it just, it's complicated.
Yeah.
And it was set up purposefully to be complicated.
It's a little different than just a regular board vote, for sure. Yeah. So do, do you want to try and do, uh, so we can have a draft of the goals and a draft of the bylaws to bring to the full board coming out of the retreat? Is that reasonable?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, awesome.
And, and I would suggest folks take a look at, and, because I know they're on the website, um, to take a look at those articles of consolidation or whatever you want to call them.
Mm-hmm.
Because they're kind of important in terms of looking down the road of any changes that we might want to think about.
Absolutely.
And the board meeting will be, or the board retreat will be here?
Yeah.
Can we bring coffee and pastries?
Yeah. Absolutely. Do we need an executive session?
Uh, I do have one item for an executive session.
We do? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
And let's see... I would say... I would say under contracts. That would fall under contracts.
Okay, so I would make a motion to find that premature general public knowledge regarding the contract, uh, contract clearly places the board at a substantial disadvantage. So I'll make that motion.
A second.
Okay. Love this cheat sheet.
Hmm, it's handy.
All those in favor? Okay. And then I'll make a motion that we go into executive session at eight forty-seven.
Is there a second?
Thank you. Discussion? All those in favor? Okay.